Stanford pledge called meeting order.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Regular town council meeting, October 5th, 2020. The record show all members present and attorneys present. Need a motion to approve the minutes for September 21st.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from September 21st.
We move this second that we accept the minutes for September 21st. All in favor?
Aye.
That's it?
Aye.
Closed? Minutes carried. Let's bounce a little bit before we get into that. Just because I know it's gonna be a topic. Bounce to item number four. Ordinance number 2020-12. An ordinance creating a community center maintenance fund. Whereas the need for the exist for the town clerk treasurer to create a non-reverting community center maintenance fund to receipt monies from rentals to the community center and to designate the permissible usage of said fund. I will therefore be it ordained by the town of Kingsford Heights, Indiana as follows. There is hereby creating a non-reverting community center maintenance fund. The purpose of this fund is to receive money from rentals of the community center. This fund may be utilized for the following: the repair and maintenance of the community center, utility bills of the community center. Said fund can only be used for purposes specified herein and for no other purpose. If this fund should ever be dissolved, any fund remaining herein shall be transferred to the general fund adopted by this town council of Kingsford Heights, Indiana on the 5th day of October 2020. Need a motion for first reading?
I'll make a motion, we accept ordinance 2020-012. An ordinance creating a community center maintenance fund on its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved to second that we accept the first reading of ordinance 2020-12. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Second reading ordinance 2020-12. An ordinance creating a community center maintenance fund. Motion to accept on the second reading?
I make a motion that we accept ordinance number 2020-12 on its second reading.
I'll second it.
It's been moved to second that we accept ordinance 2020-12 on its second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Eyes have it, motion carried. Ordinance 2020-13, an ordinance establishing the standards for maintenance of water and sewer lines. Whereas the maintenance of improvements such as water and sewer lines impacts the existing infrastructure and improvements with the town of Kingsford Heights and or as it is in best interest of the town of Kings, rights to establish standards for maintenance of water and sewer lines and whereas the adoption of such standards will follow for the uniformity of maintenance of water and sewer lines to protect the town's water and sewer systems. Now therefore be it ordained by the town council for the town of Kingsford Heights, Indiana as follows. Responsibility for repair, replacement, and maintenance of water and sewer lines from a home building or structure to the town town shall be sole responsibility of the property owner. And said property owner shall bear all costs associated with any said repair, replacement, or maintenance. Two, prior to the repair, replacement, and/or maintenance, the property owner shall first contact the town to allow for inspection and verification of the source of the issue. In the event no such contact is made prior to the initiation of work or incurred expense by the property owner, the town shall not be responsible for any costs incurred by the property owner, which reveal that the malfunction is located within the main or other areas within the responsibility of the town. Any repair, replacement, or maintenance performed by the property owner shall be performed consistent with all applicable improvement standards of the town of Kingsford Heights. In the event the property owner fails to timely repair, replace, and/or maintain their respective water and sewer lines, and the town determines that the property owner's failure to timely repair, replace, or maintain their respective water and sewer lines places the town's water and sewer system in jeopardy, the town may shut down the property owner's water at the main to protect the town water and sewer system. Passed and adopted by the town of Kingsford Heights, Indiana this 5th day of October 2020. Motion to accept ordinance 2020-13 on its first reading.
I'll make a motion, we accept ordinance 2020-13 and ordinance establishing the standards for maintenance of water and sewer lines on its first reading.
Second.
It's been moved to second, we accept ordinance number 2020-13 on its first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Eyes have it, motion carried. Ordinance number 2020-13, an ordinance establishing the standards for maintenance of water and sewer lines on the second reading, need a motion?
I make a motion that we accept ordinance number 2020-013 on its second reading.
I'll second it.
Move it second that we accept ordinance number 2020-13, second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Eyes have it, motion carried.
Do we have to do three readings on that?
Yeah, three. Kingsford Heights Municipal Electric Utility Electric Tracker New Rates. What the town did was last meeting, we went from biannual tracker factor to quarterly, which means that we ended up we end up saving quite a bit of money because we can buy it cheaper and sell it cheaper rather than waiting six months for it to change. The rate adjustment shall be in the basement and purchase power cost tracking factor occasioned sold by the changes of this cost of purchased power energy in accordance with the Indiana Regulatory Commission approved December 13th, 1989. Clause number 36835-S3S follows rate adjustment applicable to the above listed rate schedules at 0.040796 per kilowatt hour a month, effective fourth quarter 2020. Notice is hereby given to the Kingsford Heights Municipal Electric Utility Kingsford Heights, Indiana. Hereby revise this purchase power rate adjustment factor to 0.040796 resulting in a decrease in which its schedule of rates for electricity sold in the amount of 0.004125 per kilowatt hour. The accompanying changes in the schedule of rates are based solely upon the change of costs of purchased power purchased by the utility from its wholesale supplier, the Indiana Municipal Power Agency. Need a motion to accept the new tracker factor, I think.
I want a motion, we accept the new tracker factor rate adjustment.
Second.
It's been moved to second that we accept the new tracker factor rate. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Eyes have it, motion carried. This is Michelle laying here. Come on forward. Floor George?
Um, I was actually trying to figure out how my bill could go from a hundred and like thirty to a hundred and fifty dollars after you guys dug into the yard next to mine. It jumped up to over five hundred dollars.
Did you figure it out?
No, they told me I had a leak, the house, my landlord had it inspected, there was no leak or anything like that. But when you guys dug into the yard next to mine, because it's an empty lot, for three days, my water was brown.
Was brown?
Yes.
Well, if you have a, if you have a break in the water pipe, then there'll be a little bit of soot or if the water is disturbed, then the soot in the pipes and stuff will get disturbed. Or it could have been when they were flushing hydrants too.
That water line she's talking about was a old service line that would have fed the house next to where they live. So it had nothing to do with their line, as far as I mean, not saying that you didn't get rust, because you could have possibly got rust from that, but
Yeah, but with no leaks, there's no way.
But it wouldn't have changed your usage, I guess.
Because there's no way with only two of us living in the house, that I went from using two to three thousand gallons a month to over eighteen. And that happened after you guys dug into the yard next month.
There's nothing that the town could do digging anywhere, because it's they're filling up what goes through the meter.
The meter's under your house.
Not, nothing on near side lots or anything else can affect that.
Okay, because my landlord asked for all the meters to be changed, someone to come out and check everything, but we've never seen anyone come out.
We have several meters that need changed in town and that are not working and we are currently working on a project for that right now, but so, what's your average usage?
Uh, anywhere between like three and four thousand. I just moved in in May.
Do you have your car go with you?
Yep.
How many gallons of water?
Eighteen thousand.
A leaky toilet will leak eighteen thousand gallons rather than
We have, we have a house in town that we finally shut off because we've they got two restrooms and one of their bathrooms leaked beyond belief. And they used over a hundred thousand gallons of water in a month.
She even set them right back down to where I was in the bin at the very beginning.
Well, I think what the, where the jump is, is in the sewer rates, because we charged her for eighteen thousand going into the sewer as well. That's what part of this issue is, I believe.
Is that the new bill?
It's two hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-five cents for a sewer rate for that eighteen thousand gallons of water. So basically what it is, is it goes through
The summer sewage rates stopped this last, this month. That's why you're seeing the higher increase in the sewage?
No, what I'm saying is, is she didn't have eighteen thousand gallons of water go through the sewer. That's what, I think that's where the most of this bill is, is actually at. The eighteen thousand gallons of water cost eighty dollars and sixty-three cents, which would be pursuant to what we, what the actual rate is, however, the sewer is two hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. And somebody that uses two to three thousand gallons of water is gonna have about a sixty dollar sewer bill as opposed to the, because you're talking about an extra fifteen thousand gallons of water that did not go through the sewer.
Well, we don't know if it went through the sewer.
Right, well, that, right, I mean, we don't know whether it went through the sewer or not.
If it went through the sewer, if they had a leak or left a hose on, then we can, you know, we could adjust the sewer, I would think, but if it went down the toilet, it was, whether it's clean water or not, it's still
Have you, have you read your meter to see if it's jumping or?
From the day that I got that bill, it didn't, nothing even changed for, for at least like three weeks on the meter at all.
Yeah, depending on your meter, if it reads in thou, it may read in thousands. So it may, I mean, you'll have to use a thousand gallons before it would roll for you. So that's why you might not have noticed in several days.
Okay, because when I got that, I went out and I looked at it and it said forty-eight. And after that, for three weeks, it never even changed.
Is it a, is it a digital? Okay, so yeah, that one isn't, should be in thousands, so
So, and which, it just said forty-eight right at the end, and that's what's recorded on that.
Yep.
But it didn't say forty-eight thousand, it just said forty-eight.
Yeah, and then next month, or, you know, it'd be forty-nine. Every, every number is actually a thousand gallon, so
So, and when I went in there and talked to them the other day, they said that I was right back to where I was the month before.
Which is odd, a lot of times, like I said, when that happens, you'll have that usage. A lot of times if the toilets stick in, you may not notice.
Yeah, I had a brand new toilet in there, so nothing, nothing is like stuck or anything, and I had a plumber come out and look at everything.
Jason, can you go over there and, and look at the usage since? See where we're at and see if it's bouncing higher or if it's, or if it's staying low? You know?
Absolutely.
Maybe we can go from there after it's checked out and see what's on. Because if it's, if it's bouncing higher now, it's something that you want to look at. But they'll look at it tomorrow, is that all right with the board?
Yes.
You can look at that tomorrow and stuff and go from there.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay? Thank you. Mr. Lipscomb?
Yes, sir.
Good seeing you again.
Pleasure's all mine, Dennis, thank you so much, council. Um, I, I would like to just lay out a, a plan for somewhat of a community-wide revitalization program. Um, I know that there's a need, not just here in the town of Kingsford Heights, for affordable housing. Uh, and, and what we've been doing is reaching out to, I mean, I've met the past two weeks with South Bend, I've met with Stark, met with Gary, Gary's really interested. South Bend is really looking forward to getting their new allocation so that they can get us involved in helping them re, well, actually what they're gonna be doing is like a lot of affordable housing projects that they have in the woodwork. I just thought that it would be a great idea for us, I say us, our company and the town of Kingsford Heights, to partner together, to come together and try to lay out a plan where we can get something done to get more affordable housing. I, we're, our company builds shipping container constructed homes, okay? And I know that there was a situation that came up and I wasn't here where a guy wanted to put a bunch of trailer parks in, you know? I understand where you guys are coming from with that. This is completely different, okay? This is streamlined. I'd love to get into it more, more in detail, lay out more of a business plan with you guys. If we could get somewhat of a executive session set up together where we could meet and I could sit down and we can actually go over a lot of the things that we got envisioned for, not just this town, not just this community. I mean, Stark County, Layton County, Lepore County, I meet with Tony Rodriguez this week, okay, out of Lepore County. These guys are really excited about the prospect of being able to do something like affordable housing projects, okay? And with this newer style of construction, it's never been done before. They're looking forward to it, you know, they're excited about it. And I would just love to extend my hand to the town that I grew up in, okay? To bring a different look to this place, you know, to tear down some of the old dilapidated houses and and, and put new in, you know? But, but that, these are some of the things that I would like to discuss with you guys in the executive session.
I don't think it falls under an executive session.
My first blush is it doesn't without looking at the statute.
So, so then, how, how would I be able to get with you guys, I mean, outside of this forum? I mean, I, I don't want to take a lot of time, I know you guys got a lot of stuff on the agenda. But I would love to sit down and talk to you guys about the prospect.
First, I think you would have to go through the planning board to, to let us get an idea. Actually, I know what you're talking about, you already talked to me, to let us look at your plans.
Certainly.
I don't see any problem with the council looking at the plans either. They can do a couple at a time.
Um, so when, so I would have to actually meet with the planning commission first?
No, I don't think so.
So when will we be able to do this, Dennis? Because I'd like to get this penciled in. I mean, I am gonna be really
You get the next couple of people to show up.
Having a planning board if he can't bring his ideas to the planning board.
Well, there's nothing wrong with the council looking at his ideas either. The planning board's supposed to report to the council and the planning board's never reported to the council since they've come in.
If you would come to the, to the board.
I think it would be more of a planning committee decision once it's already etched. It's stone somewhere where we all agree, what's that, that's gonna happen? I mean, like, what you're talking about, we could talk about it at the most
Taken consideration though.
That's what I'm talking about, I just want to be able to get this idea in front of you guys that you can see the vision that we have laid out.
Yeah, the town, the town has no property except for that little piece up by the store.
Yeah, but I, I
But Jay Ward has a bunch of dilapidated stuff he's trying to get rid of, the town's looked at it, but it's cost so much money to pay the back taxes and all that stuff. It's that it's not worth the time and effort to jump into. The two subdivisions, the subdivision behind me is owned by a bank now.
I understood that too. That, that's where I wanted to get to when I got you guys together, because there's enough, there's a way that we would be able to get grant money for this kind of funding, for a community-wide development program. There are grants out there that we can acquire. And, and we would be able to get this property back from the bank. You see where I'm coming from? So there's a lot of different options that we can use to get money, to get this property from these banks and start revitalizing this community. You know, I, I mean, I've, I've done the research, you know, I've done the research. And that's why I'm coming to you guys right now, because it's getting ready to take off, okay? Things are getting ready to start happening, and I just really would like to extend my hand to, to the town of Kingsford Heights, okay? Because I know of such need that we have. I mean, we, we've got a real need for that here. And the way I understand it, I, I wasn't at the meeting or anything, but I've been hearing that there was somebody, there's supposed to be a, a, some sort of a factory even, come, trying to come into town? I mean, that's supposed to employ like three hundred people or something?
Uh, no, news does. That'd be great though.
All right, well, you heard your friend, right?
Lepore's got a new, Lepore's got a new one coming in.
But, but, but again, you know, still the need for affordable housing is gonna never go away. I mean, as we're in a housing crunch crisis right now across the nation. This company that we have is scalable, I'm not talking about just on a national scale, but I'm, I'm talking to people right now that wants to get us down to Costa Rica and, and the Caribbean because of, you know, their hurricane ravaged areas.
Right.
You see, that, that, this kind of construction, okay, able to withstand seventy-five mile an hour fast course winds. I mean, there's nothing cheap about what we're doing. And I say cheap, but I don't mean like, cheap like a trailer park cheap. When I'm trying to, I'm not coming down with trailer parks or anything, I'm just talking about the construction is way more viable than that, that you have in a trailer park.
I think the first step would be to go through the planning commission and let the planning commission bring it to the town council. That's the way that it's generally worked in, in the past.
He was asking to bring it to the town. I don't care either way.
I mean, you know, the, the thing about it is, if I take it to the planning commission, okay? And, and I, and I tell them, to have them try to relay it back to you guys, I mean, that's not gonna, it's gonna be, you know, I'd like to be there to make sure
We have two, we have two members on the planning commission, so
We have two members on there that can represent the, the town when it comes back through.
I guess Evelyn and Joe, right?
Okay.
So, yeah, I don't, for argument's sake, that's not worth the argument over, I, I'm fine.
Unless you're coming to like a meeting like this to actually present it.
Present it, I mean, I can do that.
It's gonna have to be a public meeting, if, if it's outside of the executive thing, but I mean, I don't have a problem meeting you personally and going over the stuff, however, I don't want you to have to do it
Twice.
Twenty-five different times either, so I mean, it's, it's one of those things that you can come here, present it to all of us together, or you can go to the planning commission, let the two members that we have on the planning commission bring it back to the town council to give us ideas of exactly what it, what it is. I think that would be the proper way to go, to actually go.
Usually things are brought to the planning commission when somebody wants to build something and they've got a site to build it on, they've got plans, then it's approved. So this is just kind of out of the spectrum, but as a thing to improve the community, I think it falls under the planning commission as far as the, um, what do they call that? Planning commission acts as orders on appeals, then the community improvement stuff too, so they can, they can work in that way, so
Okay, so then, uh, the planning commission, so I would have to come to a planning commission meeting? I mean, do they have like a meeting set up?
Get with Ben at the store? And he's the president still, correct? And he'll line up a meeting and give you a date.
Okay, sounds great, you guys, I appreciate your time, I really do. Thank you so much.
Tri-Eagle Lift Station. The, uh, we met with Steve from Tri-Eagle and offered him the, uh, uh, lift station. And he's taken it to his family, sounds like he's pretty interested in maybe doing that. He does have some concerns though over the way the utilities were ripped out three and a half years ago by the drainage board. There was supposed to be a stay, I guess, that they had, and they went ahead and ripped it out. Is there statute of limitations on something like that, Amber, as far as filing a tort? Is it a two-year thing? Are we past, are we be past it then?
Well, it's a hundred and eighty days from the date of the tort.
So we're past that?
It's a political subdivision, but it's two, I think it's two seventy for a state agency.
He talked like he was gonna go ahead and take the, uh, lift station over if we forgive the other pumps that we built him for in a three thousand dollar thing. He did want us, if we, if we move forward in that direction, he would like to go back to a gravity-fed system. To do that would take putting all that pipe back in place that was ripped out, going through DNR permits and drainage board and everything else. And I told him, I said, "Well, if we went in that direction, you'd be footing the bill," and he was okay with that. So, just to let you know, if he does that, then, you know, we may when they ripped that out, they went all the way into that farmer's field and cut it off at that there's like, what, two hundred and fifty feet or so?
Yeah.
Of pipe that would have to be replaced and then go over to ditch and we'd be good to go. Right now, the six-inch water pipe that goes across the ditch is in the weather right now, it's, it's not underwater like it usually is. They tore out that concrete embankment stating that it was a, a place where things dammed up and stopped the flow, and it never, never stopped a twig. Now that the water level's down inside the creek, the water pipe that's going across the creek has started a dam of trees and everything else that's caught up in it. Uh, if the water level doesn't rise, then we're in jeopardy of that water pipe freezing in the wintertime. So we're looking for suggestions, companies as far as be able to insulate that because partially it does sit in the water. So, or we may end up trying to figure out a way to get that area to build up and stuff, maybe like dam up or something where it builds up a little bit higher and puts that underneath the water, if it's underneath the water, it won't freeze. But that's where we're at with them. He was supposed to call me today before the meeting to give me a definite, and I did not get the call. So, just so you know. The, uh, I U R C withdrawal, I don't know, why is that on there?
Let's just let everybody know if it's information
Okay, well, yeah, that's, we've been out of the I U R C for a little while now.
Yes.
Trick or treat, Christmas, or, um, Lepore has trick or treat. On the thirty-first, from five to seven, I would suggest that we follow that lead so we don't have ten thousand people out here. Everybody good with the thirty-first?
Uh-huh.
Five to seven?
Yep.
Seven to eight o'clock, hot dogs and chips and drinks at the fire department. Fire department's already okayed it. The hot dog buns we've got donated from a past citizen. And the hot dogs, Mark Bance from the High X is purchasing all of those, so we still have to get the drinks and stuff, but
Chips, chips and drinks?
Yep. And we need some help passing them out and cooking and that thing, so if you guys are Yeah, okay.
Don't jinx yourself. She's still running all over creation.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, don't see her, stay still.
Flowing down, yeah.
Christmas dinner, needy children's toy drive. I'm gonna schedule a dinner for twelve-five, December fifth. Run that from four to six P M.
How much are the tickets?
Probably.
That was three dollars.
Probably two fifty, three bucks, something like that. It'd be cheap. We'll get it, uh, we'll get everything donated again. Twelve-five, all good?
Twelve-five.
You, you cooking the pork again? You're not too old for that. Four to six. Clerk's report. Can we go through your intercom?
No.
Dwayne has a, uh, quote from Larson Danielson. Uh, work to include provide and install one door intercom unit, provide and install three wireless door release buttons, provide and install one power supply and provide and install all necessary cabling, which would allow them to push a button and open up the door and be able to talk to people by pushing a button. Great idea for the, thousand times they're opening up the door for people right now. That was, uh, for three thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. Fantastic price because the last one he got was over fifteen grand. This would come out of the COVID money.
That's a good company too.
And, uh, be repaid back to the community improvement fund. We need a motion to, uh, if you guys are all right with this.
I'll make a motion, we accept the, the bid.
Second.
Been moved to second that we accept the Larson Daniel bid to do the intercom system and wireless door release buttons at the town hall in the amount of three thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Hit your door.
The last part of my meeting is, uh, we have, uh, uh, come on, Dwayne. On, uh, we have a holiday coming up and that'll be, office will be closed on next Monday, so.
Columbus Day?
Columbus Day, yes. That's, that's it.
Is that one of our paid holidays for?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. And that's it.
Claims. When we were going into claims and stuff, last meeting, we, uh, tabled the claims.
Questions.
Because there was some problems. Uh, from last meeting to this meeting, Dwayne has taken his insurance off of the claims and he will return it back onto the claims after that money is repaid back and put, put, then, then we'll pay it again. Now they'll, uh, be giving us the paperwork from the insurance company that we can put with the claim and stuff and every month. So we need a motion to approve the claims in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred dollars and twenty-three cents. All of the bills are inside the red folder right there if you need to take, peek at anything.
I'll make a motion that we accept claims for two, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eight hundred and twenty-three cents.
Second.
It's been moved to second and we pay the claims the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred dollars and twenty-three cents. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Pay the claims. Utilities report. Jason?
It's getting that time of year, we're getting ready to start prepping for, prepping for, uh, winter.
I think it was Jason's microphone.
Um, so we'll be getting some things ready. Uh, we actually got the blue dump truck in the shop right now. Last time we were out picking up brush, one of our, uh, air brakes went out in the rear one chamber. And after we crawled under and inspected it, the other one's cracked and on its way, so it's at the shop getting both of those rear chambers fixed and a, um, when they put that new bed on the, on the dump, I guess they didn't ever shorten the hydraulic lines. Their steel hydraulic lines come out there. And when we used it for brush this year, we smashed the line, so they fixed that while it was there as well. I, I don't look for it to be too super expensive, but it's something that obviously we have to have it. Um, except we'll be getting out, uh, the old leaf back here soon.
Damn, is that his microphone? I thought it was Dave.
This week, we're gonna try to, while we got the nice weather, we're gonna go out and, uh, do one last mowing hopefully and get that all taken care of. Hopefully it don't grow no more. Um, and then we also have got, um, Randy and Drake actually was out working on the, uh, spreading more grindings today. We're still, when we get a spare moment going out there spreading, um, we're hoping one of our suppliers is, uh, getting a, some type of grader box that goes on the front of a skid steer. And they rent the, uh, they rent a skid steer, I think it was two, two hundred and fifty bucks a day. So I'm hoping once he gets that, that we can possibly rent that maybe a couple of days and, and get that thing smoothed out and be done with. Other than that, I think that's about it.
Um, get everything together for the next meeting on a water tap fees. We're gonna discuss the water tap fees and.
Okay.
The sewer tap inspection fees.
Okay.
So we can get that done.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
I really don't have too much to report. State inspectors did a surprise visit at the wastewater plant. Everything came back to earth. And other than that, uh, we digged a street sweeper and it did a great job on the streets.
Took tons of stuff off the streets.
Yeah, we got.
A lot.
I should have brought a picture of that pile of dirt.
Like to proceed with that program twice a year in the future. Other than that, that's all I have.
So that's all the time, this is the only time we're gonna use it this year then, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, 'cause any later it'll be freezing up and then the leaves aren't good for street sweeping.
How do our, uh, how do our hog's troughs look like when now the drain's going down the boulevard? Are they all cleaned out and everything too?
Yeah, we cleaned them by hand a couple months ago, month and a half ago. Looked out last week and they looked good. There's a little bit dirt in the lawn, but I don't know, they're in good shape.
Did a flushy with, all the rest of it went through then, right?
Yeah. So I have.
Okay, thank you much. As usual, good job, everything's looking good. Larry?
Start to slow down a little bit there. There's probably one big project going on, not that big, that'd be a garage or six hundred by the gun, but they need to start slowing a little bit right now.
Anybody here from the fire department? Police department's guy in there?
No, just, just me?
I sent, I sent all the council members emails, but just so it's on, on record, Pat Cicero is finishing the, uh, background paperwork, uh, this week. It will be to us Monday or Friday this week. And as soon as we get it, we'll schedule an executive session, go through our, uh, what we need to go through and stuff and work on hiring some police officers. So it's right around the corner.
Somebody to talk to.
Be working different shit, who are you talking about? Your attorney have a report?
Um, I, I do, I clerk's office, and I, I made a copy for you guys. The clerk's office had sent me, um, something that you guys were served by certified mail. Um, what you were served by certified mail is, um, a default judgment on a quiet title action. And there are numerous pieces of, of, of property parcels on here. Um, Dennis and Candace Dickinson apparently acquired a title to all of these parcels, um, by, um, the tax sale, um, which probably happened, I don't know, last year or something, but what normally happens after someone acquires property through a tax sale is a quiet title to it. So it looks like the town, um, was served back in July of this year with a quiet title action. However, I mean, I never got it, so this is the first I'm learning of it.
First we've seen it.
Nobody, um, responded or answered, there's been a default judgment that they're seeking, being entered. So here's a complaint that, um.
Default for anything that we had?
Um, so basically the default means that nobody has answered, filed any type of answer, responsive pleading in it. Um, and as a result, um, that they're asking for a judgment for the quiet title. Um, so I, and what I did is I, it's not the best conviction, but I highlighted, I took a picture of all those parcels and I put it in red about what property area in the town that they're talking about.
It's the one over there behind Curtis Drive.
Okay.
Curtis Road over there, it's behind the apartments on the opposite side over there, all those properties they picked up at the tax sale last year in two thousand and nineteen.
Wow.
So again, it's at the point where, um, there's been no responsive pleading because like I said, that we just got it. I don't know when the clerk's office originally got it, but, um, so I don't know if, if there's anything you'd want to do in this. Um, many times, um, municipalities get these type of things or default judgments, but it goes back originally to when the property was acquired through the tax sale. And I don't know if the clerk's office, they had to have received notice at some point, someone did. I don't know if it dates back to the last council, um, but at this point in time, it's kind of worked its way all the way through the process and at their very end where they're going in and they're asking that the title now be quieted.
Why would the town, I mean, that was private property though, that was, or was that the town's?
I don't know, that's why.
I don't think it was.
It's not ours, it's, uh, Schaffner's.
I was gonna say, that was.
Schaffner's property.
I don't know, usually what, whenever I've done it, I've ordered title search of, of parcels of property so I can see anybody and their mother that might have an interest. Now, I don't know if there was any taxes. I mean, it looks like it was wooded lot, so I don't think there'd be any sewer leens or any grass leans or anything crazy on it, so I couldn't figure it out.
All the roads that were out there were all the overgrown and everything, because he's, they're the ones that came in and asked us to, um, vacate some of the names in there because they wanna kind of combine all of them.
But if it was always private property, I don't know, like I said, I don't know why the town was included.
Yeah, this was Schaffner's at one time.
Yeah, unless there was a lien on it, like by water.
This is Schaffner's property.
Does the town still have easement and own all those roads and stuff out there?
Yeah.
I mean, we've got, we've got infrastructure out there.
We definitely have infrastructure.
Yeah, quiet title wouldn't vacate any type of easements or right of ways, so.
Why is everyone asking anything for the town?
Yeah. But I wanted to bring that to your attention, so.
That's why I brought it to you.
Yeah. And, and just like, you guys probably should have got served back in July, um, so anytime you get certified mail, always bring it to probably, um, the president's attention and, and definitely if it's legal so that I can advise accordingly. Thank you, Mr..
Okay, save the worst for last. This council worked and, uh, hard and got out of the Indiana Regulatory Commission's, uh, control. And the reason we did, got out of the I U R C was when we had the rate studies done, or should I say when the last council had the rate studies done by Cronin Associates, uh, the water and electric were, uh, you had to have the I U R C's approval before any rates could be raised or lowered there. The problem with the I U R C over the years was each utility, we found out, uh, the base rate to get there okay or yes or no, uh, was fifty thousand dollars a utility. So we were looking at a hundred thousand dollars just for the I U R C to say, go ahead, you need the rate increase. And that hundred thousand dollars would have been above and beyond what the rate increase was, you know? And, and we just, we collectively talked about that. It was a waste of money to give a hundred thousand dollars to somebody to say, yeah, go ahead and go do it. It just, it is stupid. And that's why there's so many, there are very, very few people with the I U R C now, very few. So, I went over the rates because one of the problems that the, the towns have and councils have is that good old thing called rate increases, rate studies. Nobody wants to do that. And it goes for years and years and years and then sooner or later, somebody gets hit in the face and it has to be done. The good example of that is our sewage utility where it, over the years, it had not had any kind of, uh, uh, rate increases done. The plant was falling apart, grants weren't being gotten. Uh, and in the end, because no rate increases have been done, it ended up costing a hundred and eight percent increase to get the sewage plant back to where it needed to be, which has really been a huge increase and stuff for, for that utility. But that happens for a reason. We have a water and electric, uh, utilities that have not had an increase in twenty-plus years. Right now, you are paying pre-two thousand rates. You're paying rates that were good twenty years ago. So the water utility right now, I went, I always went back a quarter in our finances and the water utility right now is losing on the average around five, six thousand dollars a month going in the red. We're twenty-one thousand dollars in the red in the water utility. That's not including that we've got fire hydrants need to be replaced, we've got water meters that need to be replaced, it's all still debt to that utility. Um, we can't go in that direction. You know, there's no way to, to, it's not fair to the citizens of this community to run a utility in the negative, go broke and then hit you in the end at a hundred and some percent trying to save the utility. The electric is in the same boat. The electric's losing around four to five thousand dollars a month. Okay? If this council had not gotten away from the MP maintenance contract, the electric utility would be gone, broke right now. Plain and simple. Right now with the money that we have inside the electric utility, it would probably take eleven, twelve months for it to go broke. But again, we're going in the wrong direction. We can't do that. Nobody runs a business in the negatives, you know? And we have to stay to the positives and, and be able to have money there. So Cronin Associates did a study of all three utilities back, back then. And the, uh, let me get to them. You've got yours, you need one?
I, I already knew it, I knew it.
Okay. The electric utility has, uh, three options: seven point nine percent, ten point nine percent, sixteen point one percent. Those options, the seven point nine percent would add another, uh, sixty thousand, two hundred dollars to the utility. Uh, at the losses that the utility's taking at this point, that would not cover the utility's loss. That would break you just about even. Ten point nine percent would bring in another eighty-five thousand, two hundred dollars, or the sixteen point one percent would bring in the hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. And one of five, my opinion is that the electric utility needs a rate increase just to stop the negative bleeding that is going on right now.
Personally, I'm against it because we're raising everything. You're gonna run everybody out of town with all these increases.
There won't be a town if we don't have any money for a utility.
Well, you don't have a town anyway, 'cause then nobody gonna be in. Can't afford to stay here.
And just, uh, just, just, uh, information, we were talking with, uh, one of the La Porte City, uh, council today and stuff, and La Porte City's going twenty-five percent across the board right now on their utilities. They're hitting it tonight.
While I agree that the, while I agree that the, an increase definitely does need to happen, I mean, we battered this, that hundred and eight percent. I, I, I don't think we should go for all broke when we're trying to recover, but at the same time, I, I do, I do understand that we need the increase. And you said the seven point nine is gonna put us at, at a, at, right at level, so is there-
A little below.
A little bit below, but if we maybe do this kinda steps, 'cause the sixteen percent has to happen regardless. If we're still just above water, that's not gonna help us. But if we can maybe step this and maybe do a, a little bit of an increase now where people aren't gonna feel it as bad as, as, um, 'cause I know we're gonna need to do this with the, with the water as well, but, uh, I just, I think it may be, over the course of the next year, maybe put something in writing in regards to each quarter or something that goes up another, up to that sixteen or that twenty percent or whatever it is that we're gonna end up doing. Because by the time this is said and done, it, it, the increase will be at probably close to twenty percent. But if we maybe do a ten percent or nine percent increase or ten percent increase, and then maybe over the course of the next, uh, year, up at another two point five percent every quarter or whatever, to get to where we need to go.
Could that be done? Yeah.
Yeah.
Then that would at least ease some financial strain on some of these fixed income households that are out here. I think that would be the smart way to go, the smarter way to go. The, the increases have to happen. We, we can't, we can't operate in a negative. There, there, we can't do that. That's not-
Yeah, but even if you're ten, ten point nine percent, at eighty-five-two, you're, you're just above the negative already at that point.
You're, you're absolutely right. However, we're, we, we said we, we had a lot of things to fix. However, we've already hit them with a hundred and eight percent increase and we're getting ready, and you wanna hit them with almost another fifty percent increase. I mean, it's, it's fine for some people, like me, I, I can, I can pretty much absorb that cost, but there's a lot of people in this community that can't. That is, and, and I have a problem. I have a problem with doing that to some, we've, we've hit them, we had to hit them with that hundred and eight percent increase. There was no doubt about it. We, we had to do that. And I hope the community understands that. That was not something we wanted to do. It's something we had to do to recover that utility. But these increases now are to sustain what we have now. And twenty-four years without an increase, you're, you're talking about something that, i- i- if each utility is like a business, you have to run it, and we have to be able to maintain that business. And the money that is above and beyond that goes back into the utility, uh, repairing the infrastructure and repairing poles and, and everything. And that's what everybody needs to understand. Not that I want this increase to happen, but I just want it to be a little bit lighter on some of the financially strained households within our community. So, if we can do a step program, I think that would be the better way to go than just an all-out, almost fifty percent increase again in utility.
I like that train of thought personally.
I mean, it's-
I didn't know you could do that.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Yeah, but what are you gonna do, what are you gonna do when you're sitting there, you're taking a ten percent increase and you're trying to jack it up another ten percent or five percent in one year? I mean, the public's, they're gonna be uproared and you're, they're still gonna have to pay it in the long run too.
Well, they're gonna have to pay it in the long run. However, it's a gradual increase and they'll get, they start getting used to that increase. People have still not recovered from that hundred and eight percent increase that we did with the sewer. Some of them, fixed incomes are still struggling to make ends meet. And, and, and personally, I, I, unfortunately, guys, I, I got elected to make some smarter decisions than what, I, I, I don't see the, the, this whole world in regards to, uh, choosing whether or not you pay for medications or pay to put food in your mouth. That, that, that's an issue for me. That's, that is a huge issue for me. And if we continue to do that, especially with these fixed income people, that, it, just because it might be a ten dollar increase, we just hit them with, uh, with a hundred and eight, uh, we doubled their sewer. Now, we're getting ready to add to another ten dollars to their water and another ten dollars to their electric. Uh, and you're talking, I mean, that's, that fifty dollars a month can go way far for some of these needy elderly fixed income people, and especially in our, uh, in, in our lower income community. So, I, I mean, I'm for the increase. Don't get me wrong. I, we need the increase, but I don't think everybody needs to absorb that increase all at once. And at ten percent, we can bounce, uh, to just above red, which we're still maintain our, maintain our, um, our level of, of service.
And then raise it every quarter.
And then raise it up a little bit every quarter to get above that so that we can start putting money back into the utility like it had fifteen years ago. So that there's, there's money in there to be able to handle the tornado that comes through or something of that nature. But for us just to go to, I, I think it's irresponsible if we, if we were just to do that all at the same time. We were, we, we were elected to fix problems. We weren't elected to create more problems.
We got elected into problems.
Well, we got elected into problems. I get that. But at the same time, we don't need to, we don't need to devastate the community more by taking more money from them that, and, and like I said, the increase has to happen. And the community, the increase has to happen. I get that. I understand that, to maintain our utilities. But I don't think it should be taken all at once. We can build just like businesses in, in the real world. It, it takes years to, to get a, a profit out of them. It's gonna take a little bit of time for us to recover with our utilities.
Okay, so, so what you're saying there is a, we do the ten percent?
Ten percent, maybe do a ten percent increase.
And then do a one, one point five percent increase every quarter. Which would end up being your sixteen percent in the end of next year.
I'd say do a two percent. That would, eighteen, 'cause then we're kinda going with the times and it'll be a total of an eighteen percent increase.
By the end of next-
By the end of next year. And then that'll put us semi-back on track for-
I don't, I don't have a problem with that personally. Other members?
I, uh, I don't know. I kinda was interested in the sixteen point one percent, just to get it going and get it over with. I mean, we're just, it seems like, it seems like we're just-
We would still be-
We're no different than the last councils or the councils before by sitting there pecking away. We're not getting anywhere. I mean, you know, you're gonna have twenty-five thousand dollars extra from this increase. Now, is this base rate? Or this is electric here on this, so there is no base rate on this one.
So, it would be eighteen percent by the end of next year?
Mm-hmm. Instead of sixteen point one.
Right.
As long as we're moving forward.
Yeah, it would be written going up every quarter. And, and councils, councils in the future and stuff, should, every four years, I mean, Buzz even explained that when he was here. Every four years, the council should sit down, look and see where they're at and stuff, and then do minimal rate increases and stuff, you know, where you're doing that two per cent, two percent, three percent and stuff to keep it going, so you don't have to run into these kinda problems here.
And people don't, like you said, like you've said in the past, people don't feel that two percent increase as much as they will that ten or twelve or sixteen percent increase.
Well, this is not a bad idea with this, because considering that we already have, it's not like the, uh, the sewer, and that's not like the electric is in the red anyway.
Right.
It's actually to the plus. We just don't wanna lose no more money on that bond that we borrowed that money off, to pay back the-
And the bond's being paid out of the sewer.
Right.
I'm for the idea.
Still where you're at?
Yep.
Make the motion to re-effect?
What did she say?
I said, "I'm for it."
I'll, I'll make a motion that we move forward with raising initially ten percent on the, the electric utility with the, with another addendum in there in regards to going up an additional two percent every quarter through next year to bring up the utilities, the electric utility.
Well, let's stay at the ten point. No, like it's, on this-
I'd just go with ten percent. Ten percent would us where we need to be.
Do the ten, and that makes it the eighteen at the end of the year.
And then it gives us the exact eighteen at the end of the, of next year. And that'll put us basically on track with everybody else, I think.
Right. Would the ten percent start when?
Uh, I, I don't know for sure if that's gonna be when we do-
Do we have to have a three reading on this and stuff?
Yeah, I have to, so the ordinance isn't even out yet.
So, you're looking at, uh, probably December first?
Is that what effective date you'd want?
Beginning of the year.
I'd say, yeah. Okay.
Or we could-
Well, I was gonna say that with that, because-
We could do a January first and go there and just make the retroact.
Well, then it would be up through the following year, because if you're gonna do two percent per quarter, after that is, to get to the eighteen percent, it's gonna be four. So, if we're gonna make this effective January first-
Then it's gonna need three readings.
Then it's gonna, right. And if you have three meetings, then it would go into two thousand and twenty-two, the first quarter in two thousand and twenty-two, for that very last two percent, uh, to get to the eighteen.
Right.
And will that work? Is that gonna be within the timeframe that we can do these ordinances and get that in, into effect, Amber?
Can it, can it be done sooner?
Yeah, you just, you have to pass it by ordinance, so.
And I'm, and I'm only saying because we're losing money right now.
You gotta have three readings.
So, we've got, uh, one, two, two meetings to pass it. We're October, so, December. December's meeting be finalized, first meeting of the month be finalized.
Be finalized effective as of January first, then?
Yeah. That's what Bob, right? And we've, and we're writing into the beginning of the new year.
That's what I said, is no matter which way we do it, it's, it's, the, the effect, the raise, the, the effect isn't, it's not gonna actually go into effect until probably the beginning of the year. It's gonna take a little bit of time to get through these.
That's, that's, that's fine, yeah.
So, what I'll need is, um, your old ordinance. 'Cause after we do all that, you can get me that, the old ordinance on it, that separates.
All rates. We haven't passed it yet. We got a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We can move the second that we raise the electric utility ten percent, uh, the first of the year, with a two percent raise every quarter.
Now, this two percent that we're talking about, we don't, we don't have to keep coming back and-
No.
No.
Re-doing, revising that. We just keep going, moving forward then, right?
Yeah, this is moving forward all the way.
And this is just tentative to, this is what you would like the ordinance to be, 'cause obviously it doesn't pass until the ordinance passes.
So, we under, we understand what we're doing then?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Home favor?
Yeah.
Hi.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I just have it motion carried. The water utility is quite frankly in peril. The water utility, this last month, recorded twenty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents in the negative. It, uh, is changing around four to five thousand dollars a month to that negative. They gave, uh, Cronin Associates gave two options on the, uh, water utility. Nine percent, which would add an additional twenty-one thousand, one hundred dollars, which would, uh, not handle what it's losing right now.
Well, even at that nine percent with the, the same right now, the average right now is thirty-one fifty-two for your base rate. Even at nine percent, it's only taking it thirty-four, thirty-five. So, we're only gaining what, three dollars or two dollars and eighty-five cents or two dollars and, at nine percent?
And the other one is a thirty-two percent, which would bring your base rate up ten dollars higher than what it is right now.
And this is the one that's in the negative by what?
Twenty-one thousand dollars. Closer to twenty-two. Probably be twenty-seven thousand next meeting.
Uh, what would it, do we, have we figured out what it would take to bring it to maybe just above what we need it to be percentage-wise, and then maybe do the step program with this one as well with, uh, moving forward with that one? I mean, I know nine percent is still cutting us underneath the, the red line, so where we need to be, but maybe up it up just a little bit to, uh-
Well, even at thirty-two percent, it's only ten dollars more a month. It's less than ten.
You keep on saying only, but only is, only is a ten dollar, is only, that, that affects a lot of people around here.
At thirty-two percent, at thirty-two percent, it's still not covering the losses it's having right now.
We got a positive, we got a plus to the electric. We can deal with that. And then now we got our sewer plant, even though it's a hundred and eight percent, we're still, we're coming forward with that one too.
Well, that one's turned itself around.
We can't afford right now to set back on it. Just wanna take a licking either.
I get that. I was just, I was asking a question in regards to what it would take to bring it up to, uh, even levels is, is what I'm, is what I'm curious about. And then do the same thing with, with this, is to step it up as opposed to with-
The thirty-two percent would bring it, uh, around sixteen thousand dollars higher to the positive.
When we're twenty-one in a hole?
Figure, figure five, six thousand dollars is negative a month, times twelve, so you've got sixty, seventy thousand dollars that you have to recover. Thirty-two percent, seventy-eight.
So, you're gonna do a electric and a water all in the same year?
Yes. Or we can keep driving our thing like it's been broke for two years.
Can't let it go, can't let it go broke. Or where are we gonna be paying it from? Twenty-one thousand dollar in a hole, where are you gonna go?
I mean, people have to eat. They have other bills besides-
I know.
Besides that.
I have, I have that same problem.
We got two and three checks coming in while other people don't. My, my, like, my water bill and sewer bill was, I've never had the higher bill before. And I'm on a fixed income and I'm very frugal. And I can't, I can't sustain it.
Well, a lot of us can. I mean, I work seasonal. Winter time, I'm sitting around, I'm not making any money in the winter time either. I mean, it's, it's hard on everybody, but what are we supposed to do? We supposed to set back?
Your wife works. You do have a check coming in every week or every two weeks.
Okay, well then. I'm for the thirty-two percent, which brings it up ten, ten dollars a, a month, or for your basic anyway. That's where I stand. You guys figure it out from there. You guys wanna go with the forty-one, sixty for the thirty-two percent, you got my vote. If not, it's up to you guys. But I'm letting you know right now, we're, we're sitting here taking a whipping on this, and you know. and you know...
Well, it's not that we're not moving forward though, that's, that's the thing is...
Yeah, but that's, that's the worst, right? I mean, let's move.
Well, but again, Joe, but you're, you're like, ready to just slit people's throats in regards to...
No, nobody stole, I'm just saying, let's get going with this. This is something that has to be done.
Well, and I, I agree, but at the same time, do we need to take it out on the community that's already taken it?
We're taking it out on the community, what we're doing, what we're doing, what we have been...
Actually...
It does affect the community.
It affects the community, but it's also affected the community that we're sitting here for twenty-four years and not did a rate increase.
Right, and, but is that our fault? We have to fix that, but we don't have to fix it all at once. I mean, that, that's, that's my point here is, is...
It would, it would take thirty-two to bring the water out of the, out of the red. I've crunched the numbers, and Clark's sitting here, he'll tell you the same thing. Where do you go? I pay three hundred fifty, four hundred dollars a month for utilities too. I don't like it either. And I am on a fixed income. And my wife hasn't worked in eight months.
And I'm not married.
Every time you look around, we're raising here, we're raising there.
That's my girlfriend, not my wife.
Everybody around us is doing the same thing now.
Everybody else has got a tax base.
Well, and I understand that too. But we're not talking about tax base, we're talking about utility money.
If you had a tax base, you, you would have money coming in where you wouldn't have to, you could generate, and you wouldn't have all of this.
No, you'd have more people paying utilities, yeah. So that's where it stands, thirty-two percent takes us, uh, just above the red. Brings us back into the black a little ways.
And that puts all three of our departments in the plus.
That would solve anything until the next councils to come in. The sewage utility, you know, I've been crunching the numbers there and stuff, and, and the sewage utility, we got the, the eight hundred thousand dollar grant for the, for the sewer plant, but there's still six hundred thousand dollars to be put in down there. The sewer plant's got about a quarter million dollar budget, we take fifty thousand of that, that pays our bond money every year, and plus you've got all of your, uh, repairs, uh, your payroll and everything else that comes out of the rest of that two hundred thousand. You know, the, the sewage utility's back to where it should be, and in our term, should be a shiny penny, shouldn't be needing anything. Randy, am I correct? It shouldn't be needing anything. If the money's spent correctly, that sewage plant should be state-of-the-art, shiny penny and not have to worry about it for years to come. But it's, it, I've said it before, you know, this is a painful year, and, and, and we're all gonna feel that pain together. I said that when we were doing the caucus in here and stuff, when people were saying, no, not the rate study, no, no, no. No, you're gonna have a rate study and you're gonna feel it, we're all gonna feel it, because it hasn't been done. Did you make the motion?
Well, I wanna know if everybody's on board here.
We don't have a choice.
You make the motion, and see what's left.
We do the thirty-two percent on the water utility increase.
Is there a second?
I'm gonna second it.
It's moved in second that the water utility, a thirty-two percent increase. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
President votes yea. Thirty-two percent increase.
Can I see, I didn't get what you guys are looking at, and I'm hoping in the future I can get all of those documents.
Yeah, let me get the...
Because what we're probably gonna need to do is reach out to Buzz, see if he then can't put what the hard math would be for your ten percent and then your two percent, so that he can...
There's his actual...
...go down to the actual figures. Thank you. I'll give it, can I give this back to you then?
Sure.
Okay.
Any public comments? No public comments. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Nobody wants a second?
Okay.
What do you want to say?
What do we wanna say?